We have enough agenda review and disposition? Any add-ons, Kyla?
Uh, no add-ons are... The only thing I can delete is... Are the committee meetings on the 20th. We do not need committee meetings. The next board meeting would be June 17th. The first Tuesday in June, remember, is the scholarship night, so we're just gonna push that out two weeks and have our last meeting for the fiscal year. And then tonight we'll decide when retreat will be.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, sounds good. Privilege of the floor. Welcome. Okay. Approval of the minutes, April 1st. Anyone see any changes or corrections? I did not.
I did.
I thought I might have. Unless it's changed. Cause I opened the other day. Let me fix me.
Yes. It has been making a motion and I was not here.
Oh, okay. Janice, did you... Bernie's making a motion and she wasn't here.
This was in the non-public.
Well, that was technically...
Oh, I don't do the...
Yeah.
But where do you need that corrected?
Um, in the last page, I'm non-public. Section minutes. Uh, it lists me as present and then it lists that I made a motion to enter non-public.
Okay.
Will you let Bonnie know? Cause you...
Yes.
Alright, a motion to approve the April 1st minutes.
I want to motion.
Second. Second by Paul, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? That's great. Student report. No Mason.
No Mason.
Great feeling.
Okay, um, so to start, we had a couple big student field trips this month. Um, just this past week, our Quiz Bowl team went to Chicago for Quiz Bowl Nations. And we had four players on our Quiz Bowl club go with Mr. Harretts to Chicago. We placed eighth, which was really exciting.
Mm-hmm.
And then another big field trip is we had our Student Senate Youth and Government Field Trip. And that was April 11th to 12th. And we had 11 students, 10. And, um, Caserino and Elderkin were our chaperones. And it was really a lot of fun. Um, and academic-wise, AP testing is starting in the next couple of weeks. It's really exciting. And, um, some events for students that are happening or happened this month is we had our Student Job Fair. And that was on April 17th. So with this, we, um, had job opportunities set up in the gym and students could walk around and sign up and just explore different opportunities here in the community. And we had numerous amount of local businesses attend. And also some branches of the military, which is really exciting. And students got to like explore their opportunities through that. And then also, um, before spring, our April break, we had our first annual Spring Carnival. And that was on April 25th, the Friday before April break. And Dr. McGloin helped to organize these events. And the week before April break, we also had dress-up days to boost our school spirit. We had mismatched Monday, Tropical Tuesday, Bobcat Pride Wednesday, Tie-Dye Thursday, and Fun Friday. And then the Friday, we had a pep rally. So we recognized all the spring sports and also the top three students in the senior class. And we also recognized our committed D3 athletes. And so we had Karis Mitchell, committed to Clark University, Mackie Welch, committed to University of Maine-Farmington, Peyton Long at Leslie University, Haley Demers at Western New England University, Luke Legacy at PSU, Sebastian Sargent at PSU, and Mason Glue at St. Lawrence University. And thought this is very exciting. It's the first time it's been done. We want to keep this tradition going. And hopefully we'll have more Spring Carnivals in the future. And then last but not least, we also have prom this Friday. Um, Friday, this May 9th, from 6:00 to 10:00. And it's being hosted by the bar at the Italian Farmhouse. And juniors and seniors are attending and sophomores can come on invite. We have 325 students going, which is very exciting. And also, um, for prom next year, we decided our location. We're gonna host it at Foster's here in Plymouth. Really exciting to have it based in the community. We're excited, yeah.
Great, any questions? Great report, thank you. Perfect. Alright, principal's report.
Good, thank you, Addie. Um, yeah, we met and, you know, I try not to repeat what these kids are presenting. But, you know, like I've said, it was a big stretch between that February break and the April break. Um, and in there academically, we did do the SAT testing, the PSAT 9, 10. Um, and we did do the 11th grade required SAS science test. Um, and so typically I report out to you about the SAT results at the July retreat. So we're just beginning to sort of sift through that data. But we did, um, perform quite well on the SAS science test. Um, that is the one that's required by the state. It's a little bit of a harder sell for the students because it's a 11th grade kind of culmination. It's, it's not really tied to their transcript. It's not tied to any one science class. But, um, we did meet as a class. We did, um, drop in a few incentives for it. Um, and they did outperform last year's class. Last year's class, we did celebrate. Um, they, they performed 45% proficient. And this class reached 49% proficient. Um, so we were really proud of them. Um, we handed out a lot of ice cream that day. Um, and we did have, um, last year, if you remember, if you were here, we did have someone score perfect. Norman Sackett scored perfect last year. And so at the underclass awards, we gave out the Norman Sackett Award. We met with Norman, he's a graduating senior. We asked him if we could continue to offer that to the highest-scoring underclassmen. So we will announce that at Underclassmen Awards this year. And Norman has been invited to give the award for the, the time that he's here. So we're trying to kind of boost the whole morale and engagement with the science test. Um, so hopefully that'll pay off in, in future years. So it, it was, we were proud of them. Um, in addition to the field trips that Addie mentioned, um, I was fortunate enough to go on the DC trip again this year. So that, if you haven't been here, is the class that Mr. Halloran and Mr. Parsons had taught for a long time here. Um, and Mr. Kylie stepped up and hoped to, to continue that class here. So this year, Mr. Austin, myself, and Ed, we took the kids to the, to the DC trip. It really is, um, it's a lot of work to get there, but when you get there, it pays off in dividends. Um, for some kids, it's the first time in the city. For some kids, it's sometimes the first airplane ride. Um, it's certainly sometimes their first experiences to certain food in a city. Um, and then additionally to that, um, we, you know, we're able to take them to Mount Vernon. They all, um, they actually, the kids actually host the trip because they individually research a monument. So we, we tour the city based on the monuments that they've researched and then fill in the gaps otherwise. And then we do go to Arlington and we tour Arlington based on the research of a fallen soldier. And we end with the changing of the guard. So it's a very historical but sort of personalized trip for them. Um, we just got the feedback from them when Kyla got to my office saying Mr. Kylie was there. Sort of, um, it takes a little while to unpack the experience for them and they had a written assignment over the break. Um, so they kind of did two things for us. They rank ordered what they did. They gave us a personal reflection and then, then they gave us future recommendations for the future. So we're, we'll begin to sort of sift through that information. But, uh, by and large, one of their, one, most of them ranked Arlington pretty high. And the other thing that was ranked pretty high was we took them to a musical in Ford's Theater, which we have taken, I know Mr. Part has taken them to a number of shows, but in more of a, you know, traditional theater. This was really different in Ford's Theater because we spent time in the museum first and then went up to the show. So, you know, they just really had a, a really great experience. So we're hoping that some of these papers will, um, be shared with the new kids that are requesting the class for next year. So I know it's not nothing, it's not anything that, that we fund or we budget for here. It's privately paid for. But I do think it just represents that sort of experiential learning that sort of getting out into the community and the greater, and the global community is important for these kids. So Mr. Kylie just wanted to make sure, um, he thanked, I thanked you for just supporting the, the field trip in general. Um, I will just second Addie's, um, Spring Carnival. It was the first annual. It was a little bit like we've never done that before. And so sometimes when you do that, it's a little bit unnerving. But I do think it was very well received. We were excited to celebrate these athletes. Um, and last minute, I did announce the top three valedictorian, salutatorian, and third honors. Two of them happened to be on that field trip in Chicago at the Quiz Bowl. But it did make me wonder, is that like a nice time to do it? Because it does include everybody in that room. You know, there's teachers in that room, there's support staff in that room. There's probably, you know, secretaries and people that these three kids have, you know, been influenced along the way. So I don't know if I'll continue it there, but I, I did receive some good feedback. Like that was a nice way to sort of wrap up the spring season. Um, so we'll see. They are, I will let you know, it's Reagan Sutherland is the valedictorian, uh, Leia Eynes is your salutatorian, and Norman Sackett, um, not surprisingly, is your third honor. So those kids will be, they're working on their bio reflections. There'll be a picture in the newspaper and then obviously they'll speak at graduation.
Do you know which towns each one of them from?
Uh, Reagan and Leia are from Polerness and Norman...
Is Plymouth, I think.
Is Plymouth? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so exciting for them. Um, super fun afternoon. Um, also over the break, um, I just wanted to thank Sean O'Brien and the, and the service he does in our community through the youth leadership. Um, he sponsored a six, um, he sponsored six students to go on a service learning trip to Puerto Rico. Um, there is a local person in our community, Ryan Carr, who has been doing some service work in Puerto Rico. The focus of this service learning trip was literacy and they have started an outdoor library in, in Puerto Rico. So it was really, um, a reorganization and sort of an update and upgrade to that library. And then meals in the community. So six seniors that participate in Yalta were invited to go. Um, and they had a great, they had a great experience, um, both in the service part and then obviously they got some fun on a Caribbean island. So that was a really exciting April break for them. So I just wanted to thank Sean for that work. Um, last weekend, we did host the, um, Bobcat Golf, Bobcat Classic Golf Tournament. So that's been happening for a number of years. That is a big fundraiser for Plymouth Athletics. Gavin Brickley has really take, stepped up and taken that on. And for the last two years, the weather has not cooperated. Um, but despite that, 32 teams played. Um, they raffle off, um, a, a number of different items. There's great engagement and camaraderie. People come back every year for that. The Owl's Nest hosts it. Um, they do a nice job with the food. So, um, just thank you to Gavin for that cause it, it does, it does fuel some of the things that, that we don't budget for here. And then lastly, there is an RSA that, you know, in the minutes, it does have to be stated. And I do have to let you know if there has been in the school year 24, 25, any substantiated incidences of bullying or cyberbullying. I am happy to report that we do not have any on record as of this school year. And I do think that's a testament to the work that Sean and, uh, and Randy do in the main office. You know, there is a real system of triage here so that concerns that are labeled bullying, which they can be labeled quickly, that are really triaged and investigated. Um, and oftentimes, just a memorandum of understanding is put into place so that it doesn't rise to that substantiated level. So I did just, I do have to tell you that, has to be in the minutes. But I also wanted to thank Randy and Sean just for the, the work they do at the kid level in the main office with some difficult context at times. And then, uh, future dates, I do know you like them. Um, the spring concert, so even though we're not having the committee meetings, is that Tuesday? So May 20th at 7:00 PM at Plymouth State, again, um, in the Silver Center. Kyle Reed has taken on the ELOs, the Extended Learning Opportunities, that we've been building and growing here at the high school. Um, there is a showcase on May 23rd. I, um, it's here in the Bobcat. It's usually done during the Bobcat block around like 10:30 to 11:30. If you're interested in coming through here, the kids have presented PowerPoints. They've done demonstrations. Um, they do all kinds of things. I think we've doubled our number, um, this year. So it'll be a nice representation of who's out in the community. I know, you know, there's even, um, I know there's kids working with Carolyn. So, um, if you're interested in seeing that, certainly come in for that. Um, and then lastly, it doesn't necessarily, it's not, it's not necessarily an invitation, but I do want you to know that, um, you know, we brought Kristen Bruhl in as the new special ed administrator. She's working really closely with Tenille Torino, the school psychologist upstairs. And fortunately or unfortunately, we were selected for a special education program approval and general supervision this year. So welcome to the job. Um, so that comes with a lot of scripted things and desk audits and file reviews. And everything has gone super well. But on Monday, the 19th, it's the time to have the parent listening component. So the state comes in and the parents are invited in. It's just a dialogue. Um, but Kristen has really, um, kind of weathered that storm in, in her first year on the job. Um, and so we're looking forward to just hosting the community. We hope it's a transparent conversation. We're open to know wh- what's going well for your students with disabilities and what's, what we can improve on. So we'll support Kristen and, you know, the community is invited, but it's obviously targeted to current parents. But just another shout-out, my administration has been really like stretching and doing some great work here. And I, sometimes I feel like I'm the only one that you see and I just want to make sure that you hear all of their names more than, more than you might. So, um, so that's what's on the docket for, for here. I don't know if you have any questions about anything?
I don't know if you remind them of graduation.
Oh, yeah, graduation. I, I guess I won't see you. I guess I won't see you. Oh, okay, I really hadn't gotten to gra, I would, I didn't know if I was gonna flood you with graduation. So it's the first Saturday in June. It's at 9:00 AM.
Here.
Here, on the football field. Um, rehearsal takes place the Friday before. And then Friday night at 5:30 at the Congressional Church in town is the baccalaureate ceremony. Um, Carol Lee Simmons, who's a retiring Spanish teacher, is the, is the speaker for graduation. And then Tom Lamb, Tom Lamb, who's a retiring social studies teacher, is the speaker for baccalaureate. Um, pretty student-led there. What else, what else to graduation? Yeah, I mean, everything's ready to go. Janice, it's like a well-oiled machine that Janice knows better than I do, quite honestly. Um, and then, you know, this big scholarship night is, is May 28th. Um, so there's a lot of dates, obviously, as things get going here. Um, where we invite all the seniors. Um, and then we do the scholarship presentations those nights. So that's, that's a big night for the community.
I don't think that's the right date.
It's not the date?
No. It's okay. June 3rd.
Oh, okay.
Scholarships and senior awards.
Okay. Questions?
Do we have a backup plan for graduation?
It's always the following day. Rain date, you mean? Yeah, it's traditionally been that. So we've, you've, they've never needed it. So I hear. Um, we do buy a lot of ponchos and we try to go unless it's, you know, like a today would have been probably a rainout. But I feel like we try to go if we can, right?
Yep, they're already purchased.
So I'm told.
It's been a few a couple of years, but we got through.
Yeah. Yeah. It's really not very long either. So to delay like families and, and events and, and plans is, reservations is, we, we try to, I think we try to go if we can. Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
And sometimes there's playoff games on that same day. So I know you try to get out of there pretty quickly.
And like the, the other thing that's come across actually today is the, the track and field meet of champions historically has been somewhat of a conflict for some individual athletes. I did learn today that they moved it to Sunday this year. So that won't be a conflict for any of our track and field athletes this year. We have moved later, um, alphabetical kids to the front of the line. So all of a sudden like Valenti is graduating in the A's. But it sounds like that won't be an issue. So, yeah. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright, and May 20th, um, is canceled.
Yeah.
Discussion items, facilities update, Janet.
Okay, back on. So, so when we left last, um, committee meeting, we talked about end-of-year priorities. So I have worked with Mark and Liza and obviously Kyle Soma is a huge resource in terms of the conversations that we're having and then going out and getting some, some quotes. So three things that we're prioritizing. And then two, I don't have numbers on, so we're gonna leave for June. But the three I did want to make you aware of is, um, we do want to put a manifold over the propane tank farm by the North Wing. So we did have to raise the pipes from underground to above ground um, due to some condensation and some freezing. And they're exposed. And so it's been recommended that we put a manifold over that so that there's no worry about anyone getting in or any animals getting in that space. So that, um, construction would be $21,000. We are looking at, um, two classrooms left in the cycle of replacing the furniture. So it's two English classrooms up on the third floor. They're the ones that are still left with the older style and a little bit more brittle table, desks and chairs. So they're left, so we would like to get them the upgraded desks and chairs. And then the third space that we didn't really do anything with was Doug Ross's old power and energy space. So we kind of, we essentially moved Doug out and we moved outdoor rec leadership in. But we didn't do anything with physical space. So that program has been operating off of, um, quite old power and energy tables. So we're looking to hire a new teacher in that program, sustain that program. And we'd like that space to be able to be more of a classroom and outdoor space. And right now, it's, it's not really working efficiently for that teacher. So in total, those three rooms, um, would be a cost of $27,000. And then lastly, um, because we're not lighting the soccer lacrosse and we're waiting on updating and fixing the fence and updating the netting for lacrosse and soccer. So because we're not doing any construction out there, that space does need some upgrade. There's quite a bit of fencing that's not stable and working and the netting is really, um, kind of disintegrating. So Todd has gotten some quotes. So to do soccer fence and netting, it would be $21,000. So all three projects essentially coming kind of in at the same quote. You're looking around 60, 68,000.
And what are the two that we're rolling over to June that we're waiting on?
The big one is obviously the AC3 replacement. So unfortunately, we were not able to get a, a real number for you and I, I don't want to give you an old number.
They're still in the design.
They're still in the design. Um, so we'll have that in June. And then the only other thing that's really been interruptive into the spring season for us, which was unanticipated, was there's been some pretty significant heaving on the tennis courts. So the piping is kind of coming up where the netting and the poles are and it's impacting play. So we again tried to get somebody out here over spring break and just didn't fit into the schedule. But we would, we are looking at a tennis resurfing cost. So I could bring both of those back to you in June.
And we talked about that at committee.
We did talk about that one, yeah.
And tennis courts resurfacing, it's been a while, right?
A while, yes.
Years.
Yes. In fact, Kyle didn't, like Kyle tried to look back and was like, that quote isn't even gonna, that's not even worth sharing. I was like, okay. So I do think that that would be important.
We'd hate to have it go so far that you can't just seal and you have to tear up and start.
Well, right.
It's already...
Yeah, it's already impacting play a bit. Yeah. And then obviously, um, Kristen Bruhl and I will meet on any unanticipated special ed costs cause I don't want there to be any surprises, um, for June.
And then Dan will be here in June to close out the books, get anything else done that we need. And that closes out the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, excuse me, I had a question on the two classrooms that we're replacing the furniture.
Uh-huh.
Was the cost for that included in our budget? Or is it an additional cost?
So that's, that's, in, that's in addition. But it, but we have leftover funds that I'm thinking, well, let's do it now and I wouldn't have to budget for it next year.
Okay.
Yeah. And you're in a furniture cycle. So it's in the CIP plan to do, so it's kind of like uniforms.
Okay, so the other amounts you gave us, are those from the additional budget or is that something we have?
No, that's not additional money.
Okay.
No.
And so there are additional money?
Yeah, but we, we, but, but we have the money.
Yep, and end-of-year funds.
Yeah, I'm anticipating having end-of-year funds for those three projects without...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So looking for approval on those three projects.
Is that a question? When you say you're anticipating having the funds, what is, what's the difference between that and definitely having the funds?
So we definitely have the funds.
Great.
They tell me in the main, they tell me that.
What happens to the old furniture?
Well, I think a variety of things, quite honestly. Because Liza and I have sort of asked that question. So sometimes, depending on the condition, we try to gift it, um, to other institutions if it's worth.
And there's a policy that we follow to get to, for getting rid of equipment and furniture and uniforms and stuff like that.
Sometimes we've used it in like, you know, like oddly enough, like the theater will sometimes say, oh, that would be like, yeah, sometimes it's absorbed. So there's been a variety of things. But, but there is a, there is a policy that we, you know. But sometimes if we're, what I've also seen is when we get to that cycle, a lot of it is not worth anymore. It's, it's reached end of life. Like there's a couple chairs that we've even like duct taped a little bit. You know, and we're like, okay.
I have some of those at home.
Yeah, we're done with this, yeah.
What's the life cycle, average life cycle of furniture in a classroom?
I think it's 10 years.
And that's the last time those rooms were?
Yeah. Well, again, you're on a rolling agenda, so, yeah. Yeah.
Great, okay. No more questions, retreat date.
Did you want to approve those?
Oh, yes, sorry. Sorry about that. Um, so does someone want to make a motion and list those more? You want to list, Paul, just the three?
The manifold over the propane tank, classroom furniture, and tennis courts.
Or soccer fence and netting.
Soccer and lacrosse, yeah.
Soccer and lacrosse.
Thank you.
I thought the, the third one was the renovation of the Ross, of Ross's room.
That's in, that's included in the three classrooms of furniture.
That's furniture, not renovation of, it's just to upgrade his...
Two classrooms furniture.
Two classrooms plus the outdoor rec space is three, yeah.
Sorry.
His face just had the old wood shop tables.
Yeah.
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 Okay, who wants to second that?
I second that.
Great. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Correct?
Thank you.
Retreat date.
So we're looking at, uh, doing the retreat similar to we did last year. So it was in an afternoon in July. Uh, we're looking at the last week in July, July 30th, if that works. Uh, it's a Wednesday, um, at the Six Burner Bistro. That's where we had it the last time upstairs and all the administrators will give their reports. Um, and then, uh, we did an afternoon, either a one or two. We tried to keep it to, uh, about two hours at the most. Um, so they're available that date, which is why I'm throwing it out there. That would work, work best for them. So does that work for everybody?
July 30th, Wednesday.
We would have no other meeting in July. That's our July meeting. Um, and I, at that meeting, I'd like to decide when we're gonna have the meeting in August because it's not worth it to have the, the meeting right in the first week. So I'll have to look at that date, but probably the third Tuesday to start the year.
It's good to know, people. And if you need any, us to approve and go into non-public, we can do that at the retreat?
Correct. And we'll have the June meeting and then that July meeting. And then I have authorization to hire still, which we will still need to do that. And we'll have the June meeting and then that July meeting, and then I have authorization to hire still, which we will still need to do that. But we're in pretty good shape at this point, so, July thirtieth.
So what was the June meeting again?
June seventeenth.
So we get June seventeenth?
June seventeenth and July thirtieth.
And possibly the third week in August.
That's what I'm thinking.
So the third week in August will be the second day of school.
So thirtieth, I was gonna ask you if one or two o'clock worked. It'd be like a one to three or two to four, is there anything that works better? Two?
Two to four?
Two. Two to four? Yeah, Janice, is that, can you double check with them on that? Thank you, yeah.
Great, two to four. Can you add, um, the dog policy onto that agenda?
The dog policy?
Yes.
It's interesting, I was just.
By a few people, can we just chat about it quickly?
I do think we need to probably update that.
Yes.
And it's somehow looped in with the smoking policy, so I'm not sure why, why the two of them are together in one. But we can, we can look at the dog policy. Which is, we have people walking through all the time with dogs, yeah.
And they bring them to games, even though we're not allowed them.
Yeah. It's a tough, tough one to enforce, so you may just want to up, update it.
Right, I think we should just look at it.
Yeah. July thirtieth retreat.
Other business, anything?
Did you want to bring up on the public school funding?
Yes, yes, Phil.
Where are we relative to staff in for next year? Do we have any open positions?
We have an open, well, I, I'll nominate a Spanish tonight. I have a, we have an open map with no applicant, with, with very minimal applicants that I'm concerned about, but that's, what else do you have?
Outdoor rec leadership, but we have some applications for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're most concerned about math right now.
Paul and I were chatting before the meeting, I think there are three districts that I've seen advertised for math.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and.
And the special ed out of district position.
Yeah, if you know anyone, the special education position is a little different, remember that's the one with the out of district. Supervision, so it requires a little different skill set around Department of Health and Human Services, Court Services, stuff like that. So we're looking for somebody who has a little bit more experience with, with that piece, which is not an easy skill set to find. If you know anyone, send, send them our, our way, be happy to take a look.
So, uh, the email I forwarded to everyone, the town of Plymouth dated, um, somewhat of a proclamation, Ted. It's, um, about the focus on funding for schools. And Scott had reached out to me and we were looking at either signing the petition that's out there or doing our proclamation, doing a letter, but trying to get the focus on the funding that our schools need. And if that gets removed, how will we proceed? It would be crippling for our communities to fund, um, and compensate for those deficits. So I don't know how people feel about that, if people get a chance to look at that, um, email, people's thoughts.
Um, what are we looking at for a timeline for that? Cause I know, um, one of the hearings was today.
It's tonight.
Tonight, well, it started at one, but, yeah. So, I mean, do we have to have the comments in by a certain time?
So, so as far as like a proclamation or, or what the select board did, I don't know of any other school boards that are doing that format. Reaching Higher New Hampshire and then New Hampshire School Boards Association, uh, has different opportunities for either individual school, school board members or school boards to sign on basically supporting public education and funding, um, given some of the restrictions in HB one, which is the, the state budget. So some are definitely more active than, than others with that piece, some individuals have signed on to it. But it's just something it.
As individuals, you can sign in to oppose the bill and write the comments.
Yeah, that reaching higher piece, yeah.
Right, and, and that, I don't, like I said, I don't know if once the hearing is closed tonight, if they are still accepting comments. But that's something that maybe particularly as we go forward with so many things coming at education, we should be either, either individually or collectively, um, kind of expressing opinions to, you know.
Are all of you getting the New Hampshire School Boards Associations like updates? Because they've been updating much more regularly and I get up, updated from the Superintendent's Association just where any of the legal issues are regarding funding, school choice, open enrollment, any of those, those pieces. It's a lot to keep up with at this point. So I, I know they give briefs, briefings once a week and I found the New Hampshire School Boards one very helpful this week. It was just a bullet point, hey, just so you realize, this is what can impact, um, your school and, and operations, so.
Yes, Phil, sorry.
Um, I serve on the Board of Directors for the School Boards Association. And I'm just guessing, I'm just wondering if this board would offer my pride, we'd speak in support of representing the board should that need arise. I'd hate to say I'm speaking for the board and I'm not, and I don't know if it would happen. But I feel more comfortable if, I, I'm assuming we're in support of that. And I could speak to say that we've had a discussion, I'm authorized to support whatever action the School Board Association takes.
Yeah, some of us do the petition and then if, how do people feel about Phil representing the board on that level and speaking to that? People feel positive about that? Okay, that sounds good, Phil, thank you, yes.
What about, um, I don't know, writing a letter to Governor Ayotte from board? You know, maybe someone in your office wrote the letter together, but, you know, expressing concern because I, it's great that we have a big House of Representatives and a good-sized Senate, but it's, from what I've heard, it's less about representation and more about, um, voting the way the head of your party is telling you to vote. Talking to a few people that are reps down there, so I think that it would behoove us to sort of reach out, skip a step, go on, go up to the top level and just, you know, express the concern for what's going on. I mean, especially smaller communities can't, we're, we're not gonna be able to, you know, put, put an education forward if we have that much funding cut. I don't know, what does, what does anybody think about, or is it just?
I think the letter would be great, I'm not sure how much we'll do, but I think we have to take actions like that.
You know, if anybody else, yay, nay?
I mean, it would be easy to do, you know, I can do that.
It's up to you, to what all of you want.
Yeah. Yeah, do people feel like that should be done?
I, I support the initiative.
Okay.
And if you want help writing a letter, I'm happy to help write it.
I mean, I could write it on, on your behalf, I mean, is there anything you want me to include specifically?
I would just say how critical funding is for, for our schools and then, you know, some of the more vaguely worded issues that are in the, in the budget that are addressing things that aren't even budget-related that, you know, we don't, we aren't gonna understand how to implement.
Anything else that?
I mean, I think I would address the specific, the specific concerns of what funding, how that would impede the successes and the impact that this school has on its community. I think I'd be pretty specific about that.
That sounds good.
And I'm more than, I mean, I know it's, um, coming, I, I, I'm more than happy to help with the writing.
If you want to send me anything, I'd be happy to include it too.
I can touch base with you, sort of what you were thinking.
Yeah.
Draft something.
Yeah.
And then send it to you.
Yeah, you could send it to me or if there's anything else and.
Sounds good.
So you'll get, you'll start that?
I'll do that this week, yeah, so you'll have something tomorrow or the next day.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good.
That's the only way it's gonna happen.
And I think, did you guys all get the town proclamation, did that come in via? Okay, yeah, just to, just to mention that, I thought that was positive. Great, okay, any other business?
I just have questions, how are you guys doing in light of concerns about budgets being cut? Directives regarding DEI?
It's a lot to keep up with right now, I think that's the best way I can describe what's going on. I think typically we like to shield a lot of that, obviously, from our schools and take care of it at the SAU office as far as dealing with anything political or anything like that. And I think the schools do feel that, that they're pretty protected from that, what's going on down there. But I get a flurry of whether it's federal documents or state documents of requirements, especially around federal funding. What's coming up for local changes and, and RSAs, uh, around curriculum, parent choice, school choice, school, open enrollment. All kinds of, uh, new RSAs that will definitely have impact, some with no fiscal note connected to it. But definitely it's going to have kickback, uh, and affect us. So I kind of like to see what gets removed in these, you know, the last stages here as it moves through, uh, the state systems. And then to see what Kelly Ayotte will do and what she'll take out or, or veto anything if possible. Like, I, there's no good read on it at this point of what she's gonna stop or not stop. Unless, have you, has anybody else heard anything? Not really.
Something that rattles around in my brain is the old issue of unfunded state mandates with the cuts that are being proposed. And, you know, with the, with the new standards discussion, what will that do to the types of programming that schools will be able to offer, even though they're required in the minimum standards? Like all co-curriculars require, not, not all that you have, but a co-curricular offerings are required in the minimum standards. But if they cut what they, that all becomes unfunded state mandates. But for years, everyone has been frightened to take, go on that hill and stand and say, we aren't doing this because it's an unfunded mandate. So it'll be interesting if that gets revisited.
Yep. I mean, the big fiscal impact, uh, issues is obviously anything around special education. And what's supposed to be funded and hasn't been, so the catastrophic aid, I said it's always been funded about sixty percent and you're supposed to do it at a hundred percent. So they said they were gonna put more back into the budget, which is only at eighty percent actually. So yes, it is more, but it's not at the hundred percent of the catastrophic aid that we're supposed to get back. The other piece, uh, I'm concerned about as well as the town is the, um, around the health insurance and the municipalities, uh, like health trusts. Uh, so that is a piece, if you, about that could have a major impact and be, could, could become a moving target like special education. Um, if we have to start paying for our own claims, you know, instead of going into a municipal pool. So that's a, that, that's another big piece that I know is being worked on as well. Adequacy is always an issue.
Is there any other way that we can support you?
No, not at this point, I appreciate, you know, the support that you always have given. It's a, you know, we never had to do much advocacy as far as, and the, and the boards have always tried to typically stay pretty neutral. But I think if you're just supporting public school funding, I mean, that's, you know, you're all here for that, I think. It's pretty general, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, privilege of the floor, Ted.
Sure, I would, I would heavily encourage, you know, you to like the governor especially. We have an opportunity, we have representatives from the North River Towns, you have your local towns do the same thing. More voices adds to the weight that it might have with the governor. Ultimately, any budget has to be approved there, so if you have the ability to stop it, so more voices, I would, I would say pile on.
Great. Anyone else? Um, consent items, we didn't have much pass around, we didn't need to sign.
No, not much.
Okay. All right, um, would someone make a motion to go into non-public for the two?
For personnel and then, um, student records for an exchange student.
Phil, seconded by Bernie, although I'm gonna do a call actually, Paul.
Yes.